Welcome to the 2223 District Budget Hearing. At the end of March, the budget was first presented to the Board, which included three different scenarios for the Board to consider. Since then, the Board has met in small groups with both the Business Administrator and Superintendent to dig into the details. Board members have shared with the Administration their comfort level from a budget perspective, and based on where the majority of the Board landed, that will drive tonight's presentation. The Board will not be voting on the budget tonight, but rather for the Business Administrator to make any adjustments to the initial budget submitted to the County for their review. The Board will vote on the budget at our next meeting, which will take place on Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 PM. With that being said, Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on April 28, 2022. If any Board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the District homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if the use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Yes, here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simons.
Here.
Ms. DeKerian.
Here.
Ms. Anglin.
Here.
You have a question.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Business Administrator, Ms. Good. I think the Board will go sit in the audience for the presentation.
Okay, originally, the preliminary budget was presented to the Board on March 15, 2022. The County Office approved the budget that was submitted on April 14th. The budget was approved. Today, we're here to share any discussions that we want to have is on the adjusted budget. What you will do at the end of this meeting is you will authorize me to submit the revised budget to the County Office by roll call. Okay, this is a budget calendar. Every year, I have to do a budget calendar to inform the County Office the budget process that took place in the district. So on December 17th, what I did was I sent every principal and all the directors of the district a copy of their preliminary budget from last year. I told them their budgets were flat. They knew the bottom line, and they developed a budget for their individual schools and/or departments. January 7th, the budgets were due back in my office. January 22nd, Ms. Vicky Lopez and I reviewed all the submitted budgets. Any questions that we had, we discussed those questions with the individuals that submitted the budgets to us. On March 10th, the state of New Jersey opened up the budgets for us to enter the information into the state's budget system. So this basically just goes through the calendar of events for the budget process. The budget was presented to the Board on the 15th of March. It was submitted to the County Office on the 24th of March. County Office approved it, as I said, on the 14th of April, and here we are today on May 3rd. We will meet, as you know, next Tuesday on May 10th, so you can adopt the final budget. Please note that at the May 10th meeting, if you want to make any other adjustments, those adjustments will have to be made in public as well as public form that were presented tonight. So, we're coming in at a 2% tax increase, which is flat. We are not allowed to go under 2%. We have to budget minimum 2%. So this year, our 2%, like last year, is going to the charter schools. Charter schools increase this year is $945,675. That's the increase over last year's tax increase. Remind you, last year, we took a tax deduction in order to support the tax increase for the charter schools. So, what's in our budget? 3% salary increase, special education tuition cost equal $3.2 million. Transportation for our special needs students, little more than $2 million. And our facilities department basically has a flat budget as well for next year. This is the charter schools transfer. This is a 10-year history on how much money the district had to budget for the charter schools over the past 10 years. You can see the highs and the lows. Where in 2019, it dipped a little, and then that was the only time it really dipped. In 2022, what was projected is what was budgeted. There were no adjustments, as you could see. What represents the increase? Now, what I want to tell you about the charter school increase, we did this spreadsheet here. So, this is the actual dollar amount increase for each charter school. And as you see, to the far right of your screen, you could see the actual percentage increase that is going to each charter school. But so note that the charter schools have a total of 27 projected new enrollment students. So that is a part of the driving force for their $945,000 increase. Are there any questions? Also note that we have no control over how much money is given to the charter schools. I'm not able to adjust any of the numbers in the budget. Those are locked fields in the state budget. So the state uploads all the charter schools' information, and our hands are tied to make any adjustments to those schools. Any questions? Okay, a best-case response. Preserving, and in some cases, program and staffing. Everybody is still in the budget. We didn't cut any positions out of the budget at all. Everyone will still receive their same contractual increase for next year. Charter schools, which I just discussed, and also we're absorbing the 2% tax reduction. So note to the audience that our Board met in three committee meetings with three people per committee, along with the Superintendent, Assistant Business Administrator, and myself. And it was discussed how we can come in at a 2% tax increase. So, understanding the key factors driving the increase in the budget. We had, I presented a 5.7% budget initially. It was a budget that included the tax loss from this current year, and it was an increase 2% next year. How are we doing this? As everyone knows, we receive grant funds. So what we're doing is we're utilizing all the grant funds that the district has, that they didn't spend this year. We're reserving those for next year to support the cuts that we took in next year's budget. The flat tax levy increase, increase in the current staffing level to meet the enrollment growth. We have six additional teaching positions built in the budget, and they're all built in the budget at Step 1 of the Teacher Guide. Maintenance and curriculum programs will be maintained as they currently are. Any and all curriculum initiatives that Ms. Lopez has planned for next year will still take place. Our maintenance and all our athletic programs and clubs will be maintained, as well as our current co-curricular and extracurricular programs. How did the budget change? In order to bring the district's total tax levy increase to an adjustment down to 2%, like I said earlier, the Board met in committees. The adjustment is due to the three grants that we received. One of the grants, which is the first grant, the CARES Grant, the district spent all their CARES grant money. We currently have the ESTR-2 grant funds. Not a lot, but we do have the ESTR-2 grant funds. And we currently have the ARP ESTR-3 grant funds, which that grant totals $5.8 million. So, we also have the pilot money that we're expecting to receive in next year for 2022-23 to help with the expenses of our budget. So we do expect the municipality to honor that request, being that they did approve it in one of their meetings. This is our operating budget. Even with my glasses on, I can't see these numbers, so we're going to move to the next slide. This slide represents these numbers, but they're readable. So this is our entire budget. You can see charter school transfer, $11,692. Our child study team, $1.8 million. Our custodial services is $3.1. Our health benefits is $4.6 million. So note that this $4.6 million includes the contribution that employees are responsible for making towards their health benefits. Instruction, the tuition, the $3.3 million is the tuition for our out-of-district students. Other is miscellaneous throughout the district. Our regular program and instructions are Fund 11. I'm sorry. Correct, all right. So whatever kids we can't service in district, we have to send to a school that can service their needs. Our regular programs of instruction, this is Fund 11, not going to the schools. So this is supplemental instruction that Ms. Lopez is responsible for. Our maintenance facilities, $1.5 million. The school-based budgets, the $30,972,516, this is the money that is going to the schools, all of our schools, not to special education or facilities, just to service the schools. Transportation, $68,000. Other support service, I'm sorry. Yes. 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 Okay, so let me go back. Let me go back. Let me go back. Let me, let me, let me go back a line. I'm sorry. Let me explain something to you to help you understand. Okay, so where says the employee benefit, the $4.6 million? That's for any employee outside of the school, okay? So that means Superintendent's Office, Business Office, Sandra's Office, Facility Security, our ground staff. That's the benefits just for them. The school-based budgets include the salaries, the benefits, the textbooks. Any benefits meaning health benefits, FICA, Social Security, TPAF, PERS. TPAF is Teachers Pension Annuity Fund. PERS is Public Employee Retirement Fund, and then DCRP. That's another retirement fund. So all of that for the schools is built into the, is budgeted into $30 million, okay? Any other, I'm sorry. No. No, my budget continues. So you go here. The $68,457,710 is the total district budget. Prior to us cutting the budget, I'm thinking, I think it was $69,447,900. I have it up here. And so we brought the budget down. Any questions? So, operating budget, where we had other services, this lists what the other services are. Okay, so for summer school, $251,000. Operating costs, $280,000. Our technology department, $236,000. Security. These lines also include salaries, but they don't include benefits, because benefits are a part of the $4.6 million. Uh huh. Right, so we're giving you, I'm giving, okay, breakdown of that, okay? The school-sponsored activities, to upkeep the property, attendance. Our interest, the $2,300 interest that we're receiving is for the maintenance reserve account and our capital reserve account. Is what the 23, that's what we're expecting to receive from our financial institution in interest. This is a revenue projection. I can't see these numbers, so they're listed like this. Our local tax levy was reduced down to $55,259,837. We're expecting $1 million in pilot money, which is less than what the township owes the district for pilot money. Our private contributions are budgeted at $46,000. And our interest, what you show on the last screen, was the $2,300. The million dollars rent is the rent from preschool programs that are renting space in our district. Our state aid, which has been reduced, is now seven, well, we're expecting $7,519,625. And federal aid, which this federal aid is IDEA and Title I, Title II, and Title III totaled $246,000. And the budgeted fund balance is the money that we didn't spend or will not spend this year in order to budget it into next year's budget. Are there any questions? I'm sorry. The $62,472 is miscellaneous revenue, and I only put $62,000 in it because we're receiving students into one of our, one of our special education programs. Another district sends us three students into our district this year. So I am expecting to receive those same three students next year, okay? We don't pay for the transportation. We just pay for the edu, I mean, they pay for the transportation. We receive the $62,000 for tuition. Any other questions? I'm sorry. No. No, because the money that we receive for facility usage, whatever we collect there should be offset with overtime. So that's why it's not included here. It's not a dollar for a dollar, but that's what we use those funds for. Any other questions? No. Oh, I'm sorry. What did I keep doing? Questions? Yes. The money can only be used for what was written in the grant, okay? So, in the grant, Ms. Rodriguez did the entire curriculum section of the budget. So it includes curriculum. It include, we do have overtime for custodians built in. We do have money built in for Project Lead the Way. We have money built in for all the educational initiatives for the entire district for next year. We also have money built in for, what is it called? Solutions, what is that? That's at the middle. Effective School Solutions. So we have money built in for Effective School Solutions for next year. We also have funds built in for any replacement teachers, meaning that if we have a teacher or a staff member that goes out, sitting or leaves sick, we don't have a what-if budget for them. So those dollars are budgeted in that grant money. Also, we have money built in for technology, and we have money in there for uniforms for our custodians. We also have benefit money built in for, just FICA only, for the replacement teachers and for the custodians. We have professional development, and we have professional development, and we have that one position that Christine wants. What is that position called? It's a consultant position, and it will have that, it's built in for two years. That is that entire budget. So, what do we, and we had the $100,000 condenser built in that budget for Collabo School. Collabo School has been without a condenser for a number of years. So that's built into the budget. So being that we're going to use that money a lot different than it was approved in some cases, we have to write an amendment to the grant and send the amendment into the state.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I'm pilot money. Let's say something comes online in the middle of the year, next year. Would that pilot money from this year is the, I guess, the full money for the year? Or do you have it built into what's going to come online in the middle of the year in your pilot money?
No, this is money that is prior to today's date. Okay, so what happens after today will have to be budgeted into the 2024 budget.
Hey, you're only giving a million dollars on pilots.
We're only, we're only budgeting a million. We're expecting more, but this is what, we're very conservative in what the city will be releasing to us. Yes.
And then, so you think that the money, that pilot money that should have been from like a last year and this year, you think, right?
From previous year.
And you share it with all the districts, assuming that also?
Wait, excuse me.
That's assuming that pilot money is, is.
I think, I think everybody needs to understand that this is, that this is an amount that has been built into the budget, has been promised to us. If not, to your question, behind you, your question about if it comes in, will it be used for? It is actually built into the budget to be used as part of the budget now, right? So it's not going to be some extraordinary money that comes in and we're like, oh, look at all this money we have. Now we can use it on other things. It's not for that. It's basically to be counted in the budget against what we need to spend for day-to-day operations and for the school to be, for the schools to run. So, you know, in terms of your question, how it's going to, that's up to City Council. All we're doing is deciding how we're going to budget the money that's supposed to be brought to us. So it's a million. It is supposed to be more than a million. We don't know what it is, but a million to save that.
But it is the 770.
I'm.
Excuse me, just one quick question. Prior to this whole pilot game, before 770 was even built, it was promised to the public school district. I shared the paperwork, the legislation with Dr. Johnson that I actually kept from that meeting that night. It was supposed to be, that was the pilot and leaning taxes for the public school district. If you read the language, it says the Hoboken Public Schools. In terms of little, the ball dropped. The money been sitting there forever. I know what we're going to do with this. Y'all scared of us, though I got the exact changes, honey. So we don't know what the money's used for. Then the other schools and the charter schools, we don't know their name in the act, which is going to pull a bigger liability in lawsuits, because the first language clearly said public school money. It was for the public school, 770. And now it's a huge thing, because they're not releasing the money. So when you say this money here, to put it in the budget, I don't know if you're talking about the 770 money that I'm talking about.
Yes, yes, 770.
Yeah, the 770, but that was supposed to be for the public school.
And it's less than what currently, if you go into the city's budget and you go back and break down.
Yeah, but we fight that. That is what they said. We got it in writing what we spoke.
Yeah, yeah, I'm speaking specifically to how it's accounted for in the current fiscal year of city budget. So if you pour through.
Well, we've done almost three years of money.
It's three years.
They won't play games.
It is.
Right.
And hopefully, hopefully all of us, that's also.
Thank you for the clarification. Hi, yes.
So what's the per employee cost for single-person healthcare plans and family healthcare plans? How does it occur the last year and five years ago?
Okay, so. It depends. We have, we do different plans. We have New Jersey 10. We have New Jersey 15. And we have New Jersey Educated Health Plan, okay? So, the New Jersey Educated Health Plan plan opens in July. And that plan, any employee in the district that wanted to transfer out of one of the New Jersey 15 and/or Director 15 or Director 10 could move into the Jersey Educated Health Plan, which was a low-cost plan, okay? So, starting in August 2022, the state is introducing another plan, which is called the Art State Plan. So there are four plans. So you would have to pause. So, New Jersey 15 is the most expensive healthcare plan. We have very few employees that are in that plan. New Jersey 10 is the most comfortable plan, and that's where most of our employees are. However, for all the hires, we got them hired last year. They didn't have a choice of plans. They could only be in New Jersey Educated Health Plan, which is a more affordable plan. I don't know the cost off the top of my head for each individual plan, each individual category, but if you send me any of this public information, I will provide you the cost. Or, if you. Or if you come up with anything to me, I'll have the cost here, and I can share it with you. Yes.
Regarding the grants that were used to decrease the budget increase, how many of those grants can be available in future years relative to having them--
Well, those grants are known as the pandemic grants. And so this is immediate. Now, I haven't documented, and no one ever said anything. They made in, the final one ends September 2024, and that's their RPA as a rebrand. So after that grant ends, then that is over.
Thank you.
There we are. Yes.
In the presentation, you said that you were hiring six more teachers.
And in the presentation, I said we budgeted for six additional teachers. So the six additional teachers that we budgeted for could be leave your place as teachers. They could be supplemented teachers, but then we discussed the needs with Ms. Rodriguez and Dr. Johnson. It was determined that we needed to put additional teachers in that she was budgeting.
Big son enrollment, projected enrollment rate?
And or additional programs.
Are you, in terms of the enrollment, enrollment was down, has been down, right?
Because of, because of the higher--
But it really hasn't been down.
But this is, that's not a question, that's not a question for Joyce because she's BA, but, you know, we can have that discussion.
Okay, all right. Okay, fine. I just wanted to know where, what the six additional were, and what those--
Is that a question for Dr. Johnson or Ms. Rodriguez, which they can answer anything regarding staffing and/or recruitment?
Is Dr. Johnson here tonight?
No, no, she's not in today. Yes.
No.
Any other questions? Thank you for your questions.
Is there going to be like all those questions?
Yes, yes. I want to, I can't, I can't see that. Can you send that to me? Will you please send that? I'll give you, you want my cell phone number, you can send it to me. 732.
We are going to continue on with the meeting. Do any board members have any additional questions or do they want to make-- Okay. Then we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items.
Ms. Sullivan?
I'm sorry, on agenda items.
This is general, this is just gen-- we only have one.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Maureen Sullivan.
Wait, you have--
Just one second.
Just a reminder, state your name, municipality of residence, any business affiliation, and everyone has five minutes to speak, and Ms. Katamatory will notify you when you're at 30 seconds left.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Maureen Sullivan, 213 14th Street. Let me just follow up about the enrollment. I was not able to get the enrollment figures during the campaign about the new high school. We can never get the current enrollment figures. So now they are available through the state, and they are down. 16% in kindergarten. I should say every grade was down except ninth grade, which was up significantly, but every other grade was down, except second grade was flat. There was also a very large increase in ungraded special ed students. It went from, you know, it's usually every year in the hundreds, low hundreds maybe, and this year was 321, so an increase of 15%. So I was wondering about that. School choice was also up. So I, so with enrollment down, what are you doing to cope with that? I hear there's talk of hiring more teachers. Wouldn't you be talking about combining classes and having smaller classes and fewer teachers? I mean, everybody knows that COVID sent people away. They sent people away from Hoboken Hudson County. 20,000 people left Hudson County in a year, the highest in the state, the highest county in the state, according to NJ.com. So the lead on their story actually was a woman from Hoboken with a five-year-old who moved out of the county. So I'm wondering, some of the board members said this isn't true, that you're not seeing these enrollment numbers, but the state numbers say it is true. So I'm just wondering what the enrollment figures are and why are you so sure they're going to be up next year? And my other point I wanted to make was about the test scores. I went through the test scores from 2019, pre-COVID, eighth grade math scores on the SLA. In our eighth grade, 59 students took the test. Not one of them passed. Not, not one, 0% students scored in level four or five, which is considered meeting or exceeding expectations, passing. So I am, you know, state average is in the high 20s. So with the budget the way it is, more teachers, more programs, I'm wondering how much is going to be spent to ensure that the eighth graders at Hoboken Middle School can pass the eighth grade test? Are you aware of this, first of all? And what are you doing with this budget to ensure that the kids can pass math? Those are my questions. I'll go back.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Rivera, 529 Park Avenue. And the presentation for the budget was a little bit different than the one from a while back, meaning last time you were given three scenarios. Any of those three scenarios was that budget that you just performed? Is that the last one?
Yes.
Which was the one taking the grant money? Now, on top of that, no mention, I don't know if it was in one of the groupings there about the lunches for the children that we discussed at length the last time. Is it, where was it in the budget that was not mentioned? I didn't see it.
Where was what the--
Lunch programs.
Okay, so the lunch program was free for all students since the pandemic.
Okay.
Okay? So next year, the lunch program, the students will have to pay for their lunch, the ones who are paid students, the ones who are free students, and the one who are reduced students. What happens is the federal government and state government are who pays for the free students, and for the reduced students, the parents pay a portion, and then the state and/or feds pay the other portion. We do not budget for the lunch program.
Okay. Then in regards to the charter schools, when you mentioned them, you emphasized charter schools. Have they continuously, as we saw, become a, I wouldn't say a burden, but a heavy load to carry within our budget? And is there anything that can be done, whether in this field or take it to another body? Because it sounds like we're taking from one group of people who really need it, as one of the other residents mentioned. The students are not doing well in tests and stuff. Do they need better teachers in there? I wouldn't say teachers, but I would say more time with teachers. You know, where is that? I mean, I know that I probably can't do anything, but I'm just asking the question so it's on the record. Do charter schools pose a heavy burden for the district, for the children that are in the public side of the district? Then, I mean, I know that you don't answer questions, but I'm just putting it out there. If you want to answer it, that's fantastic. And for now, that is my concerns in here, but again, the grant that you're spending, putting in the budget now, I hope we don't need it for some emergency later, is risky because you still, the citizens or the residents still have to pay a pretty high tax without it. You know, imagine if you put that in there, you can't raise the taxes or you can't get any of our money. God forbid, I mean, I know there are other federal grants and such, but, you know, there's something would happen. I'm just putting, again, out there for the record. I know that it's very difficult in these times to get more money out of the air. But, you know, sometimes we have to ask the questions to see if you could ask it to other folks. I mean, I will ask city council, you know, any questions, I, you know, any other public meeting, because it's very important that, you know, we get to keep some of our money in case of something. Thank you very much. Good evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
As part of this presentation, Ms. Good laid out the charter school costs over the last 10 years, I believe it was.
Yes.
And just, you know, looking at this year, you can see the district is required by state law to raise the tax levy 2%. Ultimately, all of that is going to the charter schools this year. So I think that answers your question.
Yeah, again, I'm not also trying to say that I am against any of the charter schools.
Yeah, no. It's just, it's just fact, yeah.
Yeah, fact of the money, we're, you know, could they produce some or a little more?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, sure. Mr. Rivera?
Thanks, Tom. To add to that, I think it's important to think of the charter schools as a bill that we are presented with, that we have to pay. It's not as if we have a say on what we pay. The state of New Jersey tells the Hoboken Public School District what it needs to pay out to the three charter schools, and we fulfill that obligation out of this budget. This year, that bill increased by 8%, and it's accounted for in our budget. We do not have a say over their budgets. Each charter school has its own board. You can certainly feel free to reach out to them, but we are fulfilling our obligation to those schools by paying the bill that the state tells us to bill and budgeting for it appropriately. An 8% increase year over year, as you can imagine, may be defined by many people, myself included, speaking as an N of one, as a pressure. I am sure that if the taxpayers of Hoboken were faced with an 8% increase in the local tax levy, they would probably be upset by that. So we are faced with an 8% increase in that bill that we pay. It is budgeted for thanks to Joyce and Vicky and the good people and Dr. Johnson and the good people in our office, but we fulfill that obligation. And I think, you know, in terms of asking questions around that, you can direct it certainly to Trenton, to the charter school office, or to the individual boards of the three Hoboken public charter schools.
That's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
John? Oh, no, it says last name.
Hi, this is John Koppish, Hoboken. My first, I have three comments. My first comment is, I think you guys did a really good job in keeping this meeting a secret as much as possible. If you look on the, this afternoon, when I looked on the homepage, there's no, there's no mention of this meeting on the homepage. If you go to the Board of Ed tab on the homepage, it says that the meeting is to be determined from May 3rd, to be, it doesn't give the date. It just says budget hearing to be determined, budget meeting to be determined, TBD. So this was kept as quiet and as secret as possible, and you have the crowd, this is the crowd that you get when you keep it secret. The only actual mention I saw of this meeting was in the Hoboken Reporter last weekend, where on the ad that you placed, where you advertised the budget, in very fine print on the top, it said May 3rd at 7:00. And that's the only reason why I knew about this, this meeting. So I, I mean, the big problem during the referendum campaign was the lack of transparency. And it just seems like you've done everything possible to make this meeting as untransparent as possible. Anyway, my second comment is, you always portray, and like you just did just now, you always portray the charter schools as a cost, that it's a burden, that, you know, a lot of money is going to the charter schools, and it's up 8% and all of that. There's no recognition that the charter schools save the district millions and millions of dollars every year. The average charter school kid is, I don't know the latest exact number, but they're costing 12, 13,000 a student. The average K to 12 public school student is costing us 28,000 a student. So you're, you're saving, the charter schools are saving millions and millions of dollars. This is a great thing for Hoboken. It keeps taxes down, it keeps the budget down, and so like complaining about the cost is just, you know, it just seems like, you know, backwards. Anyway, and my third comment is, you know, well, I have two more comments. I'll go with two more comments. The cost this current year is almost 28,000 per student for the K to 12, regular K to 12 kids. And that is more, as everyone points out constantly, that is more than almost every private high school in this area, Chargers, St. Dom's, St. Peters', Notre Dame, on and on and on. And the cost is just, it really is outrageous. And I, you know, I think anyone with a sharp pencil could get in there and cut that cost in half. I think 14,000 or 15,000 per student would be a lot more reasonable, and it would be much closer to the state average for per pupil costs. And this is one reason why our taxes in Hoboken are, I think it's four, five times maybe, the national average. We're paying, and this includes the city, of course, not just the school board, but we're paying four and five times the national average in property taxes. So anyway, I just want to get those points out there. And my last point is with the enrollment. As far as I can tell from your numbers, the enrollment is going to be down, you're expecting the enrollment to be down by 28 students this year. So this would be the third year in a row that the enrollment is down, and the pre-K kids are down quite dramatically. You're projecting 102 fewer pre-K kids. It was 970 two years ago. It's, I think, 917 this year, and next year, you're saying it's going to be 815. So that's, that's a huge drop. And you're projecting 1,050 for next year, but I don't know how it's going to go from 815 to 1,050. So the enrollment numbers are going down, and talk of hiring six extra teachers just seems just a little bit crazy. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me. Where are you getting your enrollment numbers now, down for projected amounts?
The pre-K?
Yeah. Where are you getting it?
That was, that was in the budget that was published in the Hudson Reporter over the weekend. The budget that you advertised. And the 28 kids for the overall enrollment is, the budget gives a total for charter schools and regular K to 12 kids, and you're projecting that total to be down by one, but the charter school kids are going to be up by 27, so that's where I get the 28 kids.
Eduardo Gonzalez, Hoboken resident. I know this isn't a back and forth, and I just want to make a statement. Just want to talk about some of the, not misinformation, but misrepresentation, as John mentioned, in terms of the, the public charter schools and the budgeting. What, I think what everyone needs to realize is that it's, all the students are public school students, and all the students are sharing in the same tax levy. If you look at the percentage of charter school students, so just like you had that chart that showed the past 10 years, the charter school students represent roughly between 25 and 30% of all public school students, but they only receive about 20% of the public funds, of the Hoboken tax levy. So then the question is, well, why did the charter school portion go up? Well, it's simple math. If they're all part of the same pie-- If they're all part of the same pie, and charter school students, for the most part, are fixed in terms of their enrollment, it doesn't go up, the number went up just because more people are staying in Hoboken, then the obvious answer is that the Hoboken Board of Ed number decreased. And as somebody mentioned, when you look on the state's website, or even when you look at your audits, it shows that over the past three years, there's been roughly a 16% decrease in enrollment in the Hoboken public schools. So because of that, your portion of the pie then decreases. So if your portion decreases of the tax levy, then by default, everybody else's increases. And then when you look at that, that portion that goes to the public charter schools, which was 11.9 or 11.6, and if you divide that by the 834, whatever the number was, you get roughly at like $14,000 per Hoboken charter school student. So I just want to make sure everyone understands it's, we're all public school students. It's all part of the same pie. We're all sharing in public funds. The only, and I have the numbers here if anybody wants to go through and see how the numbers calculated for the charter schools. It's, again, all they're looking at is how many total students. When that number drops for one of the parties, it goes up for, for everyone else. And then just one final point about the pilot money. When I looked through the city's website, the city's proposed budget, it looked like they weren't accounting for the pilots to the public schools. Because last year, they budgeted around 800,000, and it's a line item, it says pilot money to other entities. This year, that number is down to like 300,000. And the city normally pays about 300,000, I think to Hudson County for some pilot or something. So it doesn't seem that they're budgeting for it this year. I mean, hopefully I'm wrong, and hopefully obviously they, they honor that agreement. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's been a lot of discussion on charter schools tonight, and I think, you know, we can talk about it all night long. It's, it's definitely a conversation for a different day. But when you're comparing a K-12 district versus a K-8 charter, it's, you're, you're mixing apples and oranges. There are so many things that a K-12 district has. A high school, athletics, transportation, special education, so many things that you really have to dig into it in order to actually compare the two. So I'll leave it at that, but thank you all for your, your comments tonight.
Yeah, I just, I just want to add one thing. I just want, want to add one thing, that I want to highlight something that President Angley said, which is, I don't think people realize how many special ed students we proudly serve and how much that costs. It's not a regular student cost. These students, who are very special and who we, as I said, very proudly serve, they require more. And often, and I'll be very honest about this, we get students from a lot of other schools that come into the public school because of the quality of our special education system within this school. So I think, again, just to highlight that portion of comparing apples to oranges, it's very different. It's, we're a different district than the other public schools in this city because of the quantity and quality of special services that we proudly provide.
I want to add to that. When there's a special needs child that attends a charter school, the district pays for those services that are delivered to the student of the charter school. Not only do we pay for those services, we still have to pay the tuition to the charter school. We do. We still have to pay the tuition to the charter school. So we pay the tuition, and we pay any and all special education services, including if that child leaves the charter school and has to go to an out-of-district placement. And we also pay for the transportation.
You know, we can't have a discussion. If you have any, actually, if you have any follow-up questions, I should have said this earlier. Please. Oh.
Oh, we're talking about over here.
Yeah, no, I was just talking about over here. Feel free to email any of us with any follow-up questions you have from tonight. But you can talk amongst yourselves. Of course.
Can you give that to either Nori or Vicki?
I can, I can give it to all of them.
Okay?
All right, Pat Waiters.
No, wait a minute. Excuse me, Ms. Waiters, I don't want to be rude, but you're not here. Pavel is next, and then I'll write you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, because I was here ahead of all of them. I was going to sign up, I wasn't going to talk. But I wanted to bring facts with the charter school, that he asked you the question. That's why Manny's here. But I'll do it at a later date, but this is very important.
Let, let this gentleman go, and then you could follow behind. But will you be so, I'll, I'll write your name in. I'll write your name in. Gentle, sir.
Excuse me, this thing's not really adjusted for my height. But anyway, hello, everyone. I'm Pavel Sakalov. I live on 12th and Park. I just want to start out with thanking everyone with really coming back with a very solid budget. I was here a couple of months ago with the three proposals, and I'm really happy to see that we were able to maintain a lot of the functions and the specific costs and programs that we wanted while keeping it at around 2%. That being said, kind of alluding to my previous question, I know a lot of the costs were successfully defrayed with grants that are expiring in a few years. So this is just more of a holistic concern and not targeted at this budget, but at a longer ranging, what to do once those grants fully expire. Because essentially, it'll be a deferral of the costs that we were able to defray now into future years, because we would have to cover the increases from those programs into the future. And of course, the part that we were able to cover now is going to be gone. So just some suggestions, really. I think we really need to press whoever our new state assembly and state senators are to do a better job of getting us funding from Trenton for our educational services. We pay a lot of, you know, state income taxes, and we should be really working with our people to make sure they're bringing that money home. City Hall as well. Regrettably, I'm not too well versed with the specific pilot situation, but I'm always supportive of partnerships with City Hall and community groups to see where we can, you know, share resources or partner to keep those costs down. I also think that overall, the broader conversation with the charter schools, there could be room for, you know, broader, stronger communication with those boards to see areas where we could, you know, share resources and really be a bit more present and involved in their decision-making process on their budgets so that they know that they, for example, could have some support from, you know, the wider district when they're making their decisions to keep that levy lower when we have to fund them. And overall, just holistically, I understand there's not really a back and forth conversation, but I do feel that there are members, you know, the public and the general residents of Hoboken who would welcome and want that experience, to have some kind of, you know, more of an informal back and forth. And while I recognize and thank you for the opportunities to communicate via email and things like that, I think there's a certain, you know, fun quality of having a face-to-face meeting, communication, and sorts like that. Again, I know there was town polls earlier in the year, and I'm thankful for that direction, which, you know, just food for thought, I think, especially to some of the people here. And I'm sure the wider, you know, broader community as well would like to be part of that as well. But in general, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Waiters?
Thank you for the consideration, Madam Administrator. Pat Waiters. No, I just want to point out one thing with the charter school, being a longtime resident of Hoboken and a proud product of my kids' education, whether it be the charter, Catholic, or private, because I did it all here. Well, the little one, the one that just, my older son, started out in Wallace. And when Manuel was trying to explain to you, it's a difference with the treatment, with respect to treatment for the charter school versus the public school. This became a huge fight and a dirty, dirty like game to where the public school students, the black and brown students, was not even getting in these charter schools. I remember like it was yesterday, I sent you the note, I want you to read the note from Dr. Toback, then superintendent. And he made a comment, and we made the front page of the paper, saying, "No more charter schools." Because alone with them building the charter schools, they didn't see the impact and effect that it had on our children. Okay, not even wanting to even come to school to learn. I wind up putting Ralph in the charter school, and I'm going to show you this photo. He the only one sitting there in a suit and tie in the third grade, true story. They tried everything under the sun to have my son disciplined and removed from the school, and it wound up going to court. They would not allow me in their meetings, but they would always say, "We public schools just like y'all. We public schools like the school you came from. You cannot, good luck." And my kids was in the district, in the public, in the Hoboken K-12 charter, and my daughter was in the other one, the, for the big one on, y'all, they was renting from you guys at Demeris. Oh, I said, "I got two students in school, why can't I come in the meeting?" They wouldn't let me go in a finance meeting, they would not let me go in a meeting. My kids was out of the school for two years, and they still was counting them down for free lunch. Okay? I know a lot of people in this state, they didn't know that. I got the printout from the state. I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" So people would come to me from Housing Authority, and in those milk crates I showed you, I would show you their paperwork where they, it's in the charter school in September 7th. By October 11th, they was kicked out. And Mr. Toback said, "Wait a minute, it is not going to be a fair lottery." They said, "It's a lottery. It's a lottery, okay?" My kids got pulled out of the lottery, number one. Tell me, God, don't work. Okay? Number one in the lottery. So they said, "Okay, the sibling automatically go." I'm saying this to say this, and it has not changed. They find every way under the sun. You can open your eyes and act like you don't see it. You do not see African-American kids in those charter schools. You do not. And if they are in the charter school by luck, they had to beg somebody or know a politician, they not treated the same. And it's not fair. Ola, ola has become the dirtiest fights. I get stopped by parents and stuff all the time. Millionaires is in there. And when I, when my kids went through K-12 charter, they got a group call that friendly of the charter school, where parents was putting $1,000 each, paying it. I couldn't afford it. So I'm like, "This is why I'm being excluded out of the meetings?" I can't make it up. I'll show you every piece of paper. Donate, first parent, 1,000, 500, whatever. And this is what's, I'm like, "Oh, my God, should I be here?" By, again, October 11th, Ralph was kicked out of the charter school, and we went before Judge Mangello. Just to tell y'all this, this is what I'm trying to tell y'all. Instead of being Pat Waiters' enemy, I tried to work with each and every one of y'all, especially the ones that came under Dawn Zimmer, and, and gave y'all that segregated effect. And Pat Waiters crazy, and Pat Wait, that was 27 years ago, and Pat Waiters is still involved. Pat Waiters got every documentation. Pat Waiters know exactly what's going on. Okay? I was stereotyped, talked about, everything under the sun, but I'm still involved. Because you know why? A kid's education is very important, very important. And please, don't be judgmental. And I tell every principal this, you don't know what going on behind our closed doors. Learn my story and feel my pain before you be judgmental. And it ain't always a little twinkle or a reward you throw to me. They deserve a quality, free education like everybody else. Not just use their number for circumstances to say, "Low income versus this," but don't care about the income, I mean, the education they get. But they could use them for the free lunch and free grants and free everything else. That's what's happening with this school district here. So when you say charter versus public, what you guys should work on after tonight is uniting together as one. I want to see that miracle happen. I want to see diversity for real in the charter school. I want us to be able to know what their finances are. We should be able to go to their finance meeting and take notes when they ask for this $575,000 for a pilot that's not theirs. Review that, and I'm going to make sure I get copies for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers tonight. We are going to move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Yeah, please. Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Connor? Mr. Clubful? Ms. McGurk? Ms. Simon? Mr. Kirian? Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.